Heather, call the roll please.
Mound.
Here.
Cerny.
Here.
Rekert.
Here.
Jensen. Chemnitz.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Okay, up next we have pledge of allegiance. Um, I'll ask Jade to lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, up next, uh, we have adopt the agenda. Uh, if there's no additions or corrections to the agenda, I would look for a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Cerny?
Yes.
Rekert?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Okay, up next, uh, next two items, approve minutes. Uh, I'll look for a motion to approve the October ninth regular meeting minutes. Uh, they're in your packet. If there are no additions or corrections, I would look for a motion to approve. Some move.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Rekert?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Cerny?
Abstain.
Uh, secondly, uh, October thirtieth special meeting, uh, minutes in the packet. There are no additions or corrections. I would look for a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Rekert?
Yes.
Okay, we have no unfinished business. So I will take us into new business and the first item is Police Department. Chief Sean.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Got a few things on tonight's agenda. First one, I've asked the council to approve a level increase for dispatcher Caitlin Keller, increasing her wage from twenty-two seventy-six to twenty-three eighty-three effective ten-seven of twenty-four.
Any questions, comments from the council? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve.
So, second.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Rekert?
Yes.
Next, I'd like to ask the council to approve a step increase for Officer Emily Killsback, increasing her hourly wage from twenty-five ninety-two to twenty-six fifty-six, effective eleven eighteen of twenty-four.
Any, there any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Rekert?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Uh, third, I'd like to ask the council to approve a step increase for dispatcher Kayla Benson, increasing her hourly wage from twenty-three twenty-six to twenty-three eighty-three, effective eleven eighteen of twenty-four.
Any, any questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Rekert?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
And last, I'd like the council to approve, uh, surplus of two guns.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Rekert?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
That is it.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks.
Uh, next item under new business, water and wastewater. Um, do we want Kurt or Engineer Jared?
Good evening. I think most of the things are mine on the agenda tonight here. I don't know if Kurt has anything on here, but I'm Jared Clubbony with more engineering. I'm a civil engineering, uh, by trade, um, licensed in North Dakota and South Dakota, and encourage all of your students to look into and consider STEM degrees. We do not have enough engineers that work in the, in Western and North Dakota and South Dakota. So if anybody has questions about engineering, I'd be happy to stick around afterwards and talk about it with any of you. Um, so generally what I have here, um, gonna talk a little bit about some of the projects we have going on. Um, uh, again, on my agenda is the wastewater treatment plant rehab. We still have a little bit of warranty work that's, um, being worked out out there. It's not a cost to you as a city, but we're just kinda tracking it down. Um, i- it, it's, it's taking a little longer time because of, it's a, it's a manufacturer's warranty. So the contractor's working through that stuff. It's a coating, um, the coating failed or, or needs to be re- retouched up. So, um, it'll get done. It's nothing to concern you of, um, but it's just something that's still being figured out, I guess. On the, uh, um, water system projects that we have going on, um, this is not, there's no approval item here, but just to mention, we talked about the biological assessment, um, on the water intake project. The biological assessment, the field work has been done. Um, they did some work to investigate for seven different threatened or endangered species out there. They identified potential habitat for three of those species, the pallid sturgeon, the piping plover, and, um, one other bird out there that I wasn't familiar with. See, there's, um, there is potential critical, or habitat for those species out there, even though none of them were seen. So what, what that basically means is that, um, we finished the biological assessment submitted to FEMA. During construction, there could have to be some reinvestigations or, um, monitoring just to make sure we don't have any nesting happening in those areas. And if it is, they would have to halt construction and then re- restart again. So that's the, that's generally the work that's been done, and that report has been submitted to FEMA for their concurrence. Once they approve, um, the biological assessment, we think we're gonna be given the permission to bid the project. Um, but we're still standing tight until we hear, you know, their approval. When you, when you ask for funds from the federal government and they give them to you, you play by their rules. So that's where we're at. Any questions on that? No? Okay. Alright, so, um, next thing I have to talk about, um, is the water tank project. No approvals again on that one, but generally, um, foundation work has started up there. You'll notice there's a, there's a hole up in that part of the, the golf course. Um, the tank is partially buried. So on one side, it's about six feet deep, and on the other side, it's maybe twelve to fifteen feet deep. The, the base work, which will go below the concrete foundation, is done. It's buried in Captain Clay. Contractor will have to dig out that clay in the springtime, then they can begin setting their forms to pour the concrete tank. Um, they wanted to get this base work done this fall so that, um, as soon as conditions are ready in the springtime, they don't have to worry about digging and, and preparing earthwork just because it can be wet and frozen in the springtime. So that should be done, um, ready for, uh, I would imagine, April, May, construction, whenever load restrictions come off and, you know, they're ready to go to work. We'll probably have a payment for them to make in December. Um, nothing tonight, but, and no change orders, no, no issues that I'm aware of right now. Um, so that takes us to the water treatment plant project. Um, you met for a special meeting a couple of weeks ago to approve a change order. That work is being done right now. That's the piping, the redundancy or the backup piping coming out of the plant. Um, they should be done with that work this week. Um, they've done a bunch of the other water main looping just south and west of the treatment plant. Um, uh, not done, but sitting in pretty good shape. We're expecting some weather here probably in the next week. So they're gonna have to be done with this outside work, uh, pretty quick. Again, no payment for them tonight, um, but, uh, we'll probably have a payment for them in December. Kind of high level. Um, we bid this project the first time, came in at five point two million in construction. We then revised and rebid, got great bids, came in at three point eight million. Part of it was that we attracted more bidders, part of it is that we took some work out of the project. Um, when we had the pre-construction meeting, we, we did ask the contractor to provide some pricing on, um, about five other things. Some items that, um, we took out just trying to be a little chintzy, just to make sure we got good bids and, and other things that, uh, one of them is, that's come up since, um, the project was bid. So I plan to run through, um, the prices the contractors given for some change orders, um, for you to consider. There are items I think that we would like to get done. Um, there's no gun to your head on these things. You don't have to approve them, but the contractor should provide, has provided pricing, um, that we can add in and have them do while they're here. So if there's no questions, I'll just start going through, um, the pricing that they provided. So. First item, you kinda see, um, uh, it's item A underwater wastewater. It's change order two in the amount of three thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars and forty-four cents. Um, others got it listed here as, as number three in the packets, or change order number two. Um, what that is, is the front steps of the water treatment plant, we are replacing a sixteen-inch water main under the front entryway. Uh, when we put it back, we'll be putting back a, a sidewalk and a ramp. You know, have to take that out in order to install the water main. We designed it as six feet, four inches wide, um, basically to replace what was there. Public Works has asked that we make that eight feet wide now in order to accommodate a skid steer to remove snow there. Makes a lot of sense. Um, it's not the way we designed it, but it, it's, it's a very, uh, it could be a very, uh, good use of funds if you see fit. The cost to do that, to make it, take it from six feet, four inches wide to eight feet wide, would be three thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars and forty-four cents. Do you want me to go through all of them or just that one, or one at a time?
I think we need to do it one at a time, cause you're gonna need an individual motion for each change order. So.
Okay, okay.
Um, I suppose I will call for a motion on change order number two. If that's what the council wants to do, go from a six feet, four inch to eight foot wide ramp out of the water treatment. Well, any questions or comments on that? Okay, so I'll look for a motion to approve change order number two for three thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars and forty-four cents.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Rekert?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Okay, uh, next thing that we got pricing on for your consideration is what we're calling change order number three. Um, that would be, um, starting on, on what's labeled as page four. What that entails is, um, Kurt, you might have to help me with this, but there's, there's some space between, um, buildings up there that they maintain. It's a hundred and eighty-five square feet of area. Um, I think it must be grassy, rocky, whatever area, but.
Yep, there's, so there's currently, there's gonna be a current, a walkway, then grass in the building. And all I'm asking is that we just fill the whole thing with concrete between the building and the walkway. So there's no grass to maintain, and you'll be able to put a skid steer through there, which will, it, I don't know if anybody's ever been out there in the wintertime, but it blows in and it, um, drifts in good six feet sometimes depending on the snow, on the storm. So that allows to keep it clear and gives us access to if we need to bring equipment in or motors into the front doors on these, on these pads of concrete.
So the price to do that is two thousand six hundred five dollars and, and eleven cents. Stand for questions or, or whatever.
Is there any questions or comments on that? Okay, so I'd look for a motion to approve change order number three for two thousand six hundred five dollars and eleven cents.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Rekert?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Okay, next item I have is, um, uh, labeled and handwritten is, is page five, but it's change order number four. Um, again, Kurt, help me if I might, if I speak wrong on this one here, but, um, we're doing some work on the, um, um, uh, on the backwash area just north of the plant, and it was, uh, has this started leaking since the, the project was bid, or, or was just discovered afterwards? But there's a, there's a lead seal transition going through the wall of the, of the plant. And today, we don't use lead fittings anymore. It's just kind of something from the, the fifties. It's not an approved thing. So what this would be is to replace that piping going through the wall with a, and using link seal to seal up that, that opening. So it's just, it's just going further than we had planned to go. Um, I don't know if I said that right or not, Kurt, but it's, it'd be three thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents. We can do it as designed. Yeah, we would just be leaving, um, that old stuff in the ground. And you know how it is, going back to, to do it later, to, to dig it up separately would, I'm sure, cost three times as much money. So we just wanna get it done as long as we're there.
Might as well fix it while you got the whole dug or whatever.
That's the plan.
Okay, alright. Uh, any questions or comments on that? I'm sorry to get a little ahead of you, but if not, I'll look for a motion to approve change order number four, uh, for three thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Cerny?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Rekert?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so the next thing handwritten, uh, number six at the top right, it's called change order number five. When, when the, um, when the system backflushes, it, it, it goes to the north of the plant into a small lift station, and then it goes to the, the ponds northwest of the treatment plant. And you are basically doing that about once a week. And, um, the part of this project is to replace some of that piping. So we're gonna replace the, the old stuff with, with PVC, right? So there's, i- it's all gonna be new. Um, the, the operator up there came up with an idea to, wh- wh- when you, when it goes from the lift station to the ponds, there will be water sitting in that pipe. And i- i- I don't know how far it is, maybe it's five hundred feet of, of eighteen-inch pipe. So there's quite a bit of water sitting in that. And they've, they'd like the ability to drain that line, um, in case they, they have trouble with it or, or, or for, you know, prevent freezing applications. It's, so the idea here would be to just add a saddle and a curb stop on that line. So you think lift station to ponds, it would be to basically add a water service connection that they could turn on and off and be able to drain that line back into the lift station. It's, it's not something we had planned or thought of, but the operator thinks it's a good idea, um, be- because if they, they were to have trouble with that or we did have a freezing line, they don't know how else they would, um, clean out that pipe. Um, Kurt, if I said anything wrong there, too, um, forgive me, but, um, it's, it's six thousand dollars. That's mostly materials. The pipe is gonna be open, so the cost to, you know, get a two-inch saddle, strap it onto the pipe, add some pipe, add a curb stop, the riser, and then penetrate it back into the, um, uh, the manhole i- is, like I said, it's, it's mostly material here to, to do this work. So I would, uh, stand for questions if there's any on that one.
Any questions, comments? Okay, I guess I would look for a motion to go ahead and approve change order number five for six thousand thirty-one dollars forty-six cents.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Rekert?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Next one I have is, um, change order number six. Handwritten again, um, but this is a zero-cost change order. Um, so the official completion date of this project is, um, in September of twenty twenty-five. Um, a lot of the work at the treatment plant is ordering equipment. If you recall, you guys procured which equipment you'd like the contractors to use, and then when we, when we opened the bids, the contractor then ordered the equipment, right? Like they, so we knew what we were getting. Problem is, there's, there's delay in the equipment. Um, it's not gonna be shipped until June of this coming summer. So, uh, June delivery of equipments and then September completion date means the work would happen in June, July, and August. And that's not ideal for, for your system. We had expected the equipment to be delivered earlier, and we could do the work in the wintertime when your water usages are way less. So we, we've kinda worked back and forth with them a little bit. Um, we would rather they do the work in the winter when your flows are less. So we're recommending adjusting the completion date, um, back to March of twenty twenty-six. So taking it from September substantial completion date, taking it back six months to March. It's a no-cost change order. I think Public Works is happier with that. I think we were all kinda worried about doing construction during your highest water usage times when you're watering grass and, it just wasn't the intent of, of the, the job. So any questions up in?
Do we?
Go ahead.
Do we raise any, like, uh, the extent of our funding and stuff? Does that push up against the wall if we do it in twenty-six? Cause was, wasn't there a ti- like a time constraint or basically a set point where it had to be done?
There's, it's a very good question. The, the completion is, is, has to be done by December of twenty twenty-six.
Okay, so then we got a little time.
So you get nine months then from, from that new completion date until the, when the money has to be spent.
Thanks for refreshing my mind.
Yeah.
Cause I was, I was unaware, I wasn't quite sure.
Yep.
Is, is this gonna push anything else back six months, or is this a specific? I mean, does this have to be completed before something else can be started? Um?
You know, um, the way we were kinda looking at this is, this was gonna be done this winter, and then the water tank work was gonna start next summer. It'll kind of just flip-flop it. We'll now have the water tank done in the summertime, so we'll have another million gallons of water storage. And then the, the treatment plant work would start. So they're, they're still gonna be offset. It just kinda flips them.
Okay.
So I think we're okay.
So on this one, you're just looking to change that date?
Yep, and sometimes cities are reluctant to change dates, uh, you know, if, if all of a sudden we can't wait that long because we've got a piece of equipment that's failed, or, or, you know, it's gonna cost more in engineering because it's gonna extend the project out, but it, i- we don't think it's gonna. It, it's, it's just gonna basically slide the timeframe frame back a little bit. So I, I don't foresee any other unexpected costs or anything like that by doing this.
Okay. And this is something you'd recommend doing?
I don't think we have much choice.
Okay, well, I, I was gonna get to that at some point, I mean, I, you know, I, I don't wanna be the guy sitting here saying, okay, you didn't get it done either, so.
No, I, I think we would rather it be winter work than summer work.
Correct.
Right, yeah, Kurt's taken and said yes.
Yes.
Alright, any more questions, comments? Okay, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve change order number six, which is just changing the date back to March twelfth, twenty twenty-six.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll please.
Mound?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Rekert?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Okay, uh, number seven. So the approval that we made two weeks ago was like thirty thousand bucks to do that water main outside the building. The only change is that, um, well, we, we, we did some switching around of some valves. You know, when, when we had these, we had these weekly construction meetings where we talked through stuff. Sometimes we have to slide some things, adjust some things. Uh, we, we did some, some reconfiguring. You open stuff up in the ground and it's different than you expected. We did have to add a special fitting to connect to asbestos cement pipe instead of the ductile iron pipe that was on the record drawings. So this change order is four hundred and eighteen dollars and, and two cents just because of an additional fitting that was needed. Um, I am gonna ask for approval of change order number seven. They've already done the work. Uh, we did authorize the work. It's, this'll kinda lead me into the next discussion that, um, we're having weekly construction meetings to, you know, make sure that we make decisions and keep things moving. Sometimes the cost of delays far exceeds the cost of, uh, you know, making small decisions in the field. So because it was a four hundred dollar decision, I felt confident making the, the call that, you know, we obviously can't connect to the, the pipe with the wrong fitting. So we did okay it, but I'm now asking you to approve change order number seven for that four hundred and eighteen dollars and two cents.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that? Okay, hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve change order number seven for four hundred eighteen dollars and two cents.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Cerny?
Yes.
Rekert?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Okay, um, construction's, you know, pretty much be wrapping up here for the fall, but the next thing, um, on here is, if you recall during the wastewater treatment plant project that we did a couple of years ago, because construction moves fast, um, what you did on that previous project was, um, you gave some authorization to some of the staff members to make critical decisions, uh, change order decisions. Um, again, you know, maybe typical construction crew costs, you know, five hundred to a thousand dollars an hour. So sometimes we have to make decisions to move things forward. Um, can't always wait forty-eight hours to get a, a city council decision. So what I've seen other cities do is, um, give some of that change order authority to staff, you know, maybe certain levels to the, the public works director or the, the city administrator. I think it's a good idea with three construction projects going on. Um, I think on the last one, you voted to give Heather, I, I think, a five thousand dollar, is that, is that right?
It was five or ten, I don't remember.
Five or ten thousand dollar authority to approve change orders. We would then bring it to the city council meeting the subsequent month and, and approve the paperwork like this. I think it's a good idea to do so. Um, it's your decision, and you'd have to set dollar amounts for that level. But, uh, um, again, um, I think that knowing your staff, they would take that authority seriously and wouldn't grant a bunch of frivolous things, but if they were items in order to keep the project moving and not create costly delays, then, um, that's my, that's my opinion, I guess, or my recommendation.
Um, more to that, I think currently our spending and our policy, we've given Heather or city administration, um, authorization to spend up to ten thousand dollars without council approval. So I don't know if you guys feel comfortable with that number on this. Um, but a classic example would be, I don't know if you guys wanted to have a special meeting on a four hundred and eighteen dollar change order.
Right.
You know, so, and I'm assuming all of these change orders didn't take place in one day?
No, almost none.
I'm just saying, cause currently we, especially the council approvals for every change order. So I mean, we could've had seven special meetings for change orders, so. But we already give Heather or finance administration ten thousand dollars, so. Except that's a number you guys feel comfortable with? I feel comfortable with it. Any comments?
Is it ten thousand per change order or total?
Per change order.
So, so I guess realistically, and what Jared was saying and how I interpret it, and maybe everyone to feel comfortable with is, say there's three change orders, they're six thousand dollars apiece, Heather approve them, we get them at the next council meeting, and we can see what got approved. But right now, we'd call a special meeting for each one. So.
I agree.
Okay. So anything below four hundred dollars, we call Kurt, Curtis? Okay.
Yes.
So, okay, no. So how would we wanna formulate this in a motion? Just let, uh, city administration and wastewater superintendent approve up to ten thousand dollars for each change order and then present that to the council at our next regular meetings? Is that a workable motions? Everybody feel comfortable with that?
I guess I would put a maximum on that. Cause what if you had fifty change orders come in? So up to, uh, I mean, can we put a ceiling on it? I don't trust Heather and Kurt, but I just feel like we should maybe have a ceiling on it.
Like three ten thousand dollar change orders?
I mean, so if you wanna say up to a maximum of thirty thousand before needing? I, I, I'm just, I just think we should have a, a ceiling on it.
You are the voice of reason, so that's, I mean, no, and, and that's, that's a reasonable.
Also married to an attorney, and I feel like we should have a ceiling on it to protect everybody involved. So, um, I, I don't know what that ceiling is. I mean, I don't know if we wanna do fifty thousand, if we wanna do thirty, whatever.
Yeah, what do you think is a reasonable, I mean? Yeah, what do you think is a reasonable? I mean, what could happen in the field? I mean.
Don't ask that question.
I mean, you're digging up decades old of infrastructure. Like, you don't know what you're gonna find.
It's hard to say. Um, I see, like, the city of Mandan, um, they give the, uh, city engineer the authority to prove up twenty-five thousand dollars in change orders and the city administrator up to fifty thousand dollars in change orders. Beyond that, it has to go to the city commission. So I have, I have seen hundred thousand dollar change orders, but you may wanna call a special meeting for that anyway. I don't know. It's your decision.
I mean, right now, the total, and I'm just rough guessing, we're what, about thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars over six change orders? And we also extended six months, so.
Well, and our special council meeting one was for what?
Thirty.
So, I mean, we're, we're past that thirty already. I guess I would propose fifty. I, I mean, I would hope that. I mean, of course you hope it doesn't get that high, but, I mean, we are dealing with old stuff, so.
And a fourteen million dollar project, is that about right?
Yep.
And I would think if it was above fifty, we would wanna meet as a council. I, I would think everybody involved would wanna have council approval on that.
You'd probably give us a call too.
Oh, yeah.
If something got that, if that got that high to let us know something's.
Well, I would, we wouldn't approve anything over, I would say ten thousand per change order.
Yeah, you'd give us the word if we had to.
These minor ones, I'm not too worried about, but if it got big, I'd probably be calling you all in anyway.
That would be my motion.
Make your motion, Amy.
Um, okay, how did it start?
Well, I have written down, uh, up to ten thousand per change order, a max of fifty K total in change orders. Is that what you're meaning?
And is that throughout the whole project or is that reset between each meeting? Because, I mean.
Well, there's three different projects here.
Right.
About to be a fourth when we start the wastewater.
Right, so I, I guess, I agree that there should be a, a ceiling. Um, but if there's things that are out, that are necessary to get done and it's ten thousand and one dollars, that's well under the fifty thousand dollar limit that we've set. I would propose just a fifty thousand dollar limit between meetings.
And not per change order?
Because, I mean, I trust Heather's judgment. If there's something that she's not sure on or she doesn't think that we're gonna be okay with, we'll, we'll have a meeting. So.
So from one cent to fifty thousand, what you're saying?
Yes.
That's the range?
Between meetings.
Between meetings.
No limit on change orders. I think that's more clear cut too, actually.
Okay, do you wanna read that just so we know?
That was Jade's motion, by the way.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
So authorized change orders up to one cent to fifty K between council meetings. Yes.
Okay, so there is a motion. Do I have a second to that?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Call the roll please.
Reichert?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
I hope we don't use it, Heather?
Me too.
But.
That's what stays in the way, Penny.
Yeah, okay. Hopefully we don't have to, to bring it up. But this is, these are rehab jobs. There's gonna be minor changes. There's gonna be some common sense things that we have to do that are just different in the field than what the records show. So it's, it's gonna be inevitable that we're gonna be asking for approvals of some things. And we'll just follow up at the meetings and keep the project going. So. Any questions?
Any more questions for engineer? Or Kurt?
I just have one question, I guess. Um, is that change order power that Heather has, is it only for the one project? Or is it three current projects that are going on? So is it only for the water treatment current pro- water treatment plant project?
I took it as any ongoing project that we're currently doing.
Right, that was my intention.
As written, it wasn't specified with any particular project in mind.
Yep.
I'm gonna sit down then. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate you folks.
Okay, up next, finance department. Uh, first item, approved position of housing director and job description. Um, I believe I've visited with everyone about this over the course of probably the past, oh, ever since I've been mayor. Um, but anyway, it's, uh, finally in writing and ready to go. If anyone has any questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, I'd look for a motion to approve the position of housing director and the job description.
So moved.
Second.
Were you just gonna second or discuss?
No.
Okay, so a motion, second, there's no discussion. Uh, Heather, call the roll please.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Reichert?
Yes.
Okay, up next, approve promoting Monica Winnaker to library director, increasing hourly salary from twenty dollars sixty cents per hour to twenty-four sixty, uh, effective October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Uh, there are no questions or comments. I would look for a motion to approve.
I'm just gonna add a little comment that that, that change was approved by the library board. By state law?
Yeah, by state law, they have to appoint the library director and they have done that.
All right, so is any of questions or comments? I'll look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Reichert?
Yes.
I was gonna try to turn that off, I apologize. Um, up next, approve increasing firefighter Colton Hunter. Uh, fire wages from twenty-six dollars, twenty-six eighty to twenty-nine twenty. Is that per hour as shown?
Yeah, this is for when they go to, on their out-of-state firefighting that we're gonna get reimbursed for.
And the fact.
At least we'll do the payroll for them.
Okay, and effective date of October seventh, twenty twenty-four. There are no questions or comments. I'd look for a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Reichert?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Um, approve repairing the slide at the pool using reserve funding. Heather, do you wanna talk about this all better?
Yeah, so this is in your packet. We've talked about it prior, but we've never made the official approval. So in order to open the slide this summer, we have to make some substantial repairs. Um, the proposal for all those repairs comes to eighty-five thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars. Um, we have an aside fund balance for the pool of eighty-four thousand three thirty-one. So if the council chooses to repair the slide, that's where I would recommend that we take the funding to fix it. The repair probably would happen in the spring. The reason I'm asking for it now is that we need to get on their schedule for them to be here in the spring in order to open it next summer. Um, Kurt's met with him several times and I don't know if he's, if you have any technical questions, he's, he's your guy.
Okay, any questions or comments on that? Technical questions at all? Okay, hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve repairing the slide at the pool using reserve funding.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Reichert?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Okay, up next in your packet, approved liquor license renewals. Uh, looks like there's, uh, a few of them here. Looks like Merkels, Mulbridge Pit Stop, Last Chance, Stoics Incorporated, Oke, Kramer Incorporated, American Legion, The Current, Madrigal, KB Hospitality, Moose Club, Silver Dollar, Dean Almer, uh, Madrigal Again, for another license, uh, Dollar General and Family Dollar. I'm guessing all taxes are current. No, no issues with any of them. Okay. Are there any questions? Is anyone to speak for or against? Okay, I'd look for a motion to approve the liquor licenses as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Reichert?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Okay, up next, um, looks like we have approved concession stand and event staff. Um, looks like we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine folks. Uh, for concession, the event staff at twelve dollars per hour for the Rotary Classic at, uh, Sheerhow on December twenty-first. So there are no questions or comments. I'd look for a motion to approve the concession stand and event staff for that.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Reichert?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Okay, last item, uh, under finance department is approved cemetery deed. Looks like there's one. So I would look for a motion to approve the transferring of that.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Reichert?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Okay, then now we're into discussion information. So the financial report, that's in your packet. We get this every month, so if you have any questions or comments, get with Heather later. Get all your questions answered. Uh, next up is building permits. Looks like there's a total of four permits, uh, for a total of three hundred thousand, three hundred dollars worth of construction and replacements. Uh, last item under discussion and information is events and library report. I don't see MJ here.
Nope, she's working at the library.
Okay, that's why she's not here.
Yeah, but, um, she's, she's done a lot of different things at the library since she started. Um, one of the things she's done is have brought coffee into the library and that's brought a lot of new patrons in. Um, some people come down and have a cup of coffee and read the paper or play on their tablet after they've gone out for a walk. Um, she's at all kinds of events that are gonna be going on here shortly. Um, I gave you guys a little bookmark that they made that they're giving out to the school and anybody who comes in listing out all the events. Um, the library also will be open again on Saturday mornings from nine to twelve to give people another chance to get down there. Um, they're gonna do a parade of trees, which will be kinda fun. So if anybody wants to decorate a tree. About it.
Okay, any other comments on that? Questions? Okay, that'll take us into public forum and visitors. Is there anyone here tonight wishes to address the council on anything that we have not talked about? No big burning questions. Okay. Uh, take us into payment of bills. Uh, the bills were, uh, looks like an addition was presented on your tables before the meeting. Grand total, seven hundred twenty-six thousand, one hundred seventy-five dollars and forty-one cents. If there are no questions on the bills, I would look for a motion to approve payment of the bills.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Cerny?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Reichert?
Yes.
Okay, uh, before we adjourn, I forgot about this last time, but I'll go ahead and do it. Uh, just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Um, cause we're not gonna be back here till December. So anyway, have fun. And I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Reichert?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.